I'm going to bring us back to order. We'll have the final committee of the Bellingham City Council for this afternoon. That's committee of the whole. We have several items on our agenda. The first one is Bellingham Neighbors Together. It's a presentation about a new program. The Neighbors Together program is a volunteer citizen organization being developed now to create a visible public presence of neighbors in their own community to reduce crime, to educate residents, and promote safe neighborhoods. Scott Hendrickson is here as the program coordinator. Shall I start with you, Scott, or?
Oh, by all means, you can start with Scott. I'm Bill Slowdisco, and I'm here with Scott.
Bill, go ahead.
Scott is the volunteer coordinator for the department, and he can go ahead with the presentation.
Well, thank you, everybody. My first time here. I appreciate the introduction, Michael. So, yeah, Scott Hendrickson, volunteer coordinator for Bellingham Neighbors Together. You have a little rack card in front of you that gives the nuts and bolts of this new and expanded volunteer program.
I was told not to forget that. Thank you, everybody. I sure appreciate that reminder there. Start again. Scott Hendrickson, volunteer coordinator for Bellingham Neighbors Together. You have a rack card in front of you there that gives the nuts and bolts of this expansion of the volunteer program through the Bellingham Police Department. I was hired in the fall of 2016 as the volunteer coordinator. We implemented, rolled this program out in February of this year at the MNAC meeting. My motivation is I was a sailor my whole life. Thirty years at sea, the last twelve. You might have seen me on the Alaska State Ferry Columbia, coming into Fairhaven on Friday afternoon, or maybe leaving. I lived in Bellingham and still do in the Leonard Street with my wife Jenna for over twenty years. I don't even know my town. I barely know my neighbors. Something had to change. Now I'm retired. I'm home. Volunteer coordinator, Bellingham Neighbors Together. There we go. So, I got the job. The coordinating job is, excuse me, Bellingham Neighbors Together. Continuation of the volunteer programs put out by the Bellingham Police Department. A long history there with Chief Cliff Cook from Fort Worth, Texas. There's a program that he initiated currently in Vancouver, Washington, and now here in Bellingham. You will know that we do have a volunteer program currently here, RSVP, Retired Senior Volunteer Patrol, started in the seventies. They do a wonderful job on patrolling handicapped parking, disabled parking permits, getting abandoned vehicles off the street, house checks. But this expansion for BNT is something a little different, as Michael said. This is about getting folks, your neighbors, maybe yourself, people that care about their community, people that care about the quality of life on their block, volunteers out looking in the city. And we, what, the way we're going to do this is old-fashioned. We're going to get people who want to be connecting, who want to earn public trust. We want them out there talking with their neighbors. We want them bringing people together. These volunteers have to be excited about the community, to learn about what's going on, to want to be part of it, to make a difference. Okay? So, how are we going to do that? Well, right now, we're currently have applications either online, or you can print it out and mail it into the police department. And after this application is filed, we're going to have a vetting process. We're going to do background checks, because I think you would all agree on people in public service, when we see a policeman, or we see a bus driver or somebody, we want to know someone's trustworthy, that we can count on them, that they are authentic. So, we're going to make sure we get good folks involved in here. They can have great excitement and encouragement, but I still want to make sure that they are top-notch. And then, we're going to put them through a six-week training program. This program is put on by the police department, one night a week for six weeks, maybe a Saturday for some first aid training. This six-week program will give them the basic skills to be a Bellingham Neighbor Together patrolman. These are going to be teams of three that go out, could be in your neighborhood, could be in somewhere else, could be riding bikes on the trails that we have here. Two people on patrol, these teams with one, excuse me, with one person back as a base, connected by radios, observers. No enforcement, no pocket knives. We're looking, we're interacting with what's going on as far as suspicious activity, how we can contribute to maybe something we see amiss in the neighborhood, how we could contribute to, for instance, the last speaker, the homeless fellow that's down and out on the sidewalk, how can we help you if we have to call somebody to get him to assistance or to a housing place? I think another example of Bellingham Neighbors Together, I'm sorry, I don't know the outcome. We've had an elderly fellow gone missing in the Fairhaven neighborhood. Perhaps this had happened, we had this program up a little bit earlier, we could have mobilized maybe a dozen or two dozen people to assist in his search. I'm not sure where that is right now. But... So, as we're out there, after our training, working together, it's... It's like old-fashioned. It's, we want to connect people again. I mean, social media is great. I'm on social media, and I'm being recorded today, and probably televised and all that kind of thing. But, you know, I think the community earning the trust again, inviting people to engage with each other, I think there's an importance there that in this day and age should not be overlooked. And I believe there's potential here in Bellingham Neighbors Together. I know I got the motivation. I'm ready to go. Skill set, I'm working on that. I got Bellingham Police Department behind me, though. Great folks, top to bottom. I think it has a chance of really getting started, something started here. I know that Ms. Vargas, tourism's important to you. And imagine we have folks coming in from out of town, and they come here, and they get confused, or it's late at night, or something happens, and there's that, look at that gray cap. That's not a policeman. That's a Bellingham Neighbors Together. I can help you out, because I'm going to have on a shirt with the same polo vest, with a polo with a crest. It might just be the things that makes their trip fantastic rather than end in something a little less pleasant. So, Bellingham Neighbors Together, any way you can spread the word. I do go to neighborhood meetings. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. I think we have another council member who are interested in asking you some questions. Unfortunately, I didn't catch the order. Were you, who was?
Yeah, that's April.
Okay. April, Dan, and then Pinky?
I'm going to too.
All right, and then Roxanne. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm interested in, when we go through this application process, how we're going to ensure that we're getting a diverse cross-section of our community. I think that the outreach is going to be really important to make sure that we're getting a variety of people, different social economic status, different race background. So, I'd like you to speak to that. And then, I'd also like to know how much of our bias training is going to be going in, because this, when you talk about things like determining suspicious activity, I start to get concerned, and I want to make sure that people are being extremely sensitive to their own pockets of prejudice as they're going out into our neighborhoods and determining what suspicious activity is. So, I'd like you to hit on both of those.
The application process is open to anyone. One of the things that we're doing, the prior volunteer program is a senior volunteer program. This is broader. We're hoping to attract all ages. As far as specific efforts to recruit among diverse groups, we're not making any specific efforts. We're not getting a tremendous flood of applications right now, so anything's really welcome. With respect to implicit bias, we are going to have a section in the training specifically oriented towards fair and impartial policing. Deputy Chief Dahl and Deputy Chief Simon are both instructors in that curriculum. And one of those, or both of them, will be presenting during the academy for Bellingham Neighbors Together.
I'm sorry. Just a follow-up. So, they'll be going through the full implicit bias training, the police department?
No, they won't be. This is, the academy is three hours a night for six weeks. The full implicit bias training and fair and impartial policing was two whole days for the officers. So, there's no way we could do this and have that full training given. They will be given a section on that. They're getting much abbreviated training compared to what police officers get and the rest of the department gets.
Dan?
I think that was, that was one of my questions about implicit bias. I was also wondering what other types of training specifically for trauma-informed responses and then crisis de-escalation training, are those included in the training profile?
They are not expected to interact with people directly if they, in a situation where there's a crisis, they're going to call for an officer. They're going to back off and call for an officer. They are going to get on their radio, if necessary, and switch over to the primary frequency and say, "This is an emergency. I need an officer to respond." They're not trained to get directly involved in a crisis, or something where de-escalation's required or force is used. Their training will be to back off, be an observer, and call and get the appropriate resources there. Thank you.
Pinky?
Good questions. Some of mine have already been answered now. I'm just curious how we're doing outreach, or what we're doing for outreach. Are we posting it on nextdoor.com? Do we have a Facebook site that we can all share? How can, how can we help with outreach? And curious what you guys are doing for it.
Great question. Social media is very effective. We do have the city of Bellingham, the police department. It's on that website. We have Nextdoor. We have Facebook. I go out to neighborhood meetings. I've been to about six so far. There's 25 neighborhoods. I have a few more to go to. So, we are looking at all the avenues that we can to make sure people know about it. I will say that I have asked my lieutenant if I could wear a sandwich board and walk around town, but he said that was not allowed.
Thank you.
Roxanne?
Well, I'm a retired, but maybe still partially active block watch leader. So, I uniquely appreciate what you're doing here, because to me, neighborhood safety is so much about feet on the streets, simple things like keeping your porch lights on, you know, cutting back your hedges so that there won't be places where people can hide. And the only way we can get the word out about this stuff is if our neighbors know each other, and we're connected with each other, and we have each other's cellphone. I mean, I did a smaller version of what you're doing, and I bought a bunch of fluorescent shirts. And then, there would be people that would just walk around the community, and then anybody who wanted to try to do bad things on our street knew that there was some kind of thing that was going on there. So, I really value what you're trying to pull together, and I look forward to supporting that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Roxanne. I'm also a G Street resident, and, but we probably have a little nicer shirts than you have, so I welcome you to, we do have women's.
Terry?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for this, the work that you're doing, and encourage anyone that wants to do that. Getting volunteers, Bellingham's a very active city, and getting volunteers to do this kind of program, you know, takes a lot, a lot of people, a lot for people to step forward and volunteer. My hat's off to them. The more eyes that we have on neighborhoods and other things, the better with it. You know, I do understand what April's concerns that she expressed, just that if people do have the understanding that just because somebody might be brown, that's not a danger in a neighborhood, you know, that they may, you know. And, but, in terms of the training, I know that, I've worked with volunteers in a lot of different capacity, and have had trained, trained a lot of different volunteers. And, you know, my hat goes off to the people that do that, willing to do that kind of thing. So, I wish you luck on that, and city luck with it.
I'm going to make a comment, too. I'm going to reinforce, I think, what April said about diversity. You said the program is open to anyone, but I think we're discovering that that actually isn't a good way to ensure diversity. You need a positive ask to communities that might be underrepresented, that might traditionally shy away from what looks like authority or official organizations. So, I'm going to suggest you need some positive outreach to those communities. Otherwise, you're going to get imbalanced and a less diverse representation than you could otherwise get. April, you want to say something else as well?
Yeah. So, I know the Opportunity Council's recently taken over the, oh, Volunteer Center. So, that would be a place. But also, you're going to have to reach out to very specific groups to really ensure that they're welcome, and really what this program is. So, wording and presentation's going to be really important, especially if we want this to be a community program versus an authoritarian-type program. I appreciate, I know that the police department's coming from that, but it's still coming from a police department, so it can be difficult. And I'd be happy to work with you after this to discuss certain populations that would be great for you to do a direct ask-to and to work with. There's other trainings that, if you're not going to give them to your volunteers, I'd highly suggest that you'd maybe give them a list of opportunities. The Welcome Family and Community Network does a trauma-informed training, so that it's about building resilient communities, but just differences in how you respond to people who might be dealing with some difficult situations in their life. And I know it's not when they're in a crisis situation, but just in general, how you even interpret somebody's behavior. And then, there's the Darkness-to-Light Training, too, with Bridget Collins. And if people are going to be out, they certainly should be able to. Darkness-to-Light Training is learning how to hopefully see some signs that a child might be engaged in some really inappropriate behavior from an adult. So, that might be also a training that they might want to do on their own, but maybe a, I guess, a sheet of different trainings that they could do, so they'll be the most informed.
And besides the basic six-week program, we'll continue to offer training programs to the volunteers on a regular interval after this program is up and rolling. So, certainly, some of those things would be very worthwhile to include. And with respect to recruiting in different communities, yeah, we're open to any suggestions and help with, on that topic.
Okay. Thank you very much. Just thank you, Scott, and best of luck. And those online, please consider volunteering. The better people we have, the better program will be. Our next item is a surplus lands assessment. This is establishing a replicable methodology in a 2017 report and action plan. These are lands owned by the city that may be surplus to our needs. The city Bellingham staff have developed a process for identifying potential surplus properties. That process relied upon a two-tier evaluation format. The first tier evaluates each city-owned property against a set of established and objective criteria through the use of an automated GIS model. GIS has to do with geographical information systems, I think. It just has to do with our computer mapping techniques. The second-tier evaluation relies on a project team to review, to evaluate, to review process to evaluate and supplement the first-tier evaluation. Sorry if I'm not reading that very well. The results are then stored in a centralized and accessible city property database. This process will be repeated on an annual basis, and will be accompanied by an annual report and action plan for those properties. This is our first such report and action plan. And Greg, shall I turn over to you to begin with?
Just, thank you, Michael. Greg Ockett, Planning Department. I just want to introduce Kate Newell, who is the lead staff person on this project, and she will provide you with the staff presentation.
Kate, take it away.
Thank you. Kate Newell, GIS analyst, City of Bellingham Planning Department. And we just wanted to give you a review of what we've been up to since we were last before you in June of the summer. And to start off with, I wanted to just go over the main goal of this project, and that was to create a replicable process. We did that by establishing criteria that fed into a two-tier evaluation process, the first tier being a GIS, Geographic Information System, model. This is a very objective model that takes each city property and reviews it against the established criteria. Second-tier evaluation is then a project team review that takes the results of the GIS model and reviews and evaluates and supplements that information. In the end, we're left with a centralized and accessible database of city properties. In the past, when we've looked at surplus property, this has been a very departmentalized process, and it's often pretty laborious and repetitive. So, this really brings it into a central location where each property is being reviewed against established criteria. So, it's all on a level playing field. And so, a quick review, June 20th, we came before you with our criteria that we would feed into this evaluation. And they're broken down essentially between existing facilities and current use, and then our environmental criteria. And the GIS model goes through and evaluates each city property against these criteria. This might be a little difficult to read, but if you were to poke into the GIS model after we run it, this would be essentially one city property. You can see in the highlighted yellow, each property is attributed with each criteria, and it's basically a zero-one, a present-not-present evaluation. So, the model runs through all 800-plus properties and attributes each property with what it finds. This is a very objective process. The exception to this is critical areas. The model runs through and essentially does a percent encumbered per parcel. This is approximate. So, that's the one criteria that is reported in a percentage instead of a present-not-present. Again, the next step, the Tier Two Evaluation, is the project team, and this is made up of staff from Parks, Planning, and Public Works. We sit down, and we evaluate, we went through each property after the GIS model ran, made sure they're, to validate it, verify, identify any unique situations, and then to kind of impart that, a little bit of a subjective evaluation onto it. Just like with the GIS model, in the database, we have sort of a free-form area where we're actually entering in the commentary that the project team has identified, so that it's all really accessible. We can pull it up at any time and see what was discussed or found. And through this two-tier process, it turned out about 89% of our properties are not likely surplus-able. This is a good thing. A large, vast majority of our properties have a current use or some public benefit. About 11% of our properties sifted out in this process as being potentially surplus-able. Those, about 11%, we further broke out into five different categories: in-process, short-term, long-term, potential use agreements, and planning areas for future consideration. Our, we have just one in-process site. It's made up of two parcels, Aloha Motel. You're all probably familiar with that. I think we are closing on that next month, maybe. So, not city property for much longer. Our next category is short-term properties. We have 12 parcels, eight sites, about 6.6 acres, 2.5 million in assessed value. Again, this is assessed value, so not a market value. All of these properties are smaller than two acres in size. Most of them are smaller than one acre in size. And these are sort of scattered sites around the city. And these are really our, what came out of the model is the most feasible in the next one to four years as being potentially surplus-able. Our next category of potential properties are in the long-term category. This is probably our largest category. There's 24 properties, make up about 43 acres. Properties are in the long-term category, mostly for a couple reasons. They're dependent on other factors or actions before surplus designation would be feasible, or due to their size and current use, they require more, more intensive planning and investigation into the feasibility of their sale or lease. And these properties really have the potential of what we're looking at as trading stock. So, trading stock being real property that is not currently feasible or beneficial as surplus, but that at some future time could be considered surplus in exchange for greater public benefit. So, something that right now, we wouldn't put the time and effort maybe into surplusing, but if there was a beneficial exchange, that would maybe expedite that process. Our fourth category is potential use agreements, and these are actually properties that are not surplus-able. These are properties we wouldn't sell or couldn't sell due to their restrictions on them, size, configuration. The best example would be kind of the right-ofways, triangle right-ofways you see around town. We couldn't really sell those or develop them, but they could be, they have a greater potential use, maybe as an outdoor plaza, community gardens, outdoor sculpture locations. So, areas we identified that could have a greater use, can't sell, but maybe potential use agreement with a school, or a community, or a neighborhood. Our last category is planning areas for future consideration. And properties in this category, their surplus potential was determined to be dependent on future area-wide planning, rather than evaluating these properties on an individual basis. Evaluating them collectively as part of a larger process was a more logical approach. And these are distributed upon, in three geographic areas, mostly on the outskirts of the city, Alderwood, King Mountain, and the Sammish Crest U Street corridor. So, here's Alderwood, a handful of properties. And when we're looking at potential annexation or not, we need to look at these as part of that process, not individually. King Mountain, again, just a handful of properties, quite sizable. School District has recently purchased property in this area, and again, we felt like this was really properties that needed to be looked at collectively as part of a master planning process. And Sammish Crest U Street corridor, again, a lot of properties that we own in this area, a lot of critical areas, certainly. Any future roads, potential annexation, removal of UGA, includes all of that really needed to be looked at together. We didn't think we could look at those individually. So, where do we go from here? We propose moving those 12 short-term properties into the next layer of feasibility review, another layer of analysis, forwarding those on to our property manager and the real estate review committee to give that extra lens of review. And our annual report and actual, and action plan, there's a 2017 action plan in all of your packets. Our intent is to repeat this process on an annual basis, and every year, come back with a report and action plan for your review. So, with that, we'll take any questions.
Thank you, Kate. Council members? Council member Roxanne Murphy?
So, what would an instance be like if the city had a property, but it, somebody had approached us and said, "We would love to use this for a specific interest, and we could remove our public facility from it," for example. And you're doing this annually. Could it be updated, you know, midway through the year to surplus a property quickly to create some action?
It could. I mean, I think the benefit of this process is that we have this established database. And throughout this process, we've actually had people come to finance and say, "I'm interested in this property." And Brian really quickly can say, "Hey, what does this look like?" And I can pull up and say, "This is everything we found." So, it really kind of does expedite that process, because we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We have it all right here, and he can say, "Oh, okay. There's a water facility on it. Is it a functioning water facility?" You know? So, it's really, kind of does expedite that process, because we have it all laid out. What do we need to look at? You know, are there any encumbrances? That type of thing.
Thank you. Pinky?
Kate, in your short term, in those 12 pieces, parcels that are there, is there a tier system in there? For example, it looks like there's four residential opportunities. Could we focus on those first? I'm not in the planning department, so I don't know the demand, but I, from the feeling of everything, is we need housing. So, I'm wondering if there are a way that we could prioritize, seeing if we could move those properties sooner than later?
We did not prioritize anything. They're all kind of clumped together in that short-term process. And really, our next phase is to get it to the people that do this for a living, the market analysis, the appraisals, that type of analysis that really needs to go on before we can move anything forward.
Thank you.
Terry?
Yeah, on the short-term ones, I'm just kind of curious. There's two of the, two of those properties that are listed, the Municipal Court Parking Lot, which is currently being used as parking lot. How is that considered surplus when it's being used for functions within the city right now?
That one comes through because it essentially appears vacant. There is a use on it. The use is parking. So, this is something where the, actually, the GIS model wouldn't have found any encumbrances on it, because it can't tell that it's being used as automobile. It's coded as vacant. And then, this is where the secondary team evaluation came in and said, "Yeah, this could be a great site for infill. This could be, this is essentially a little bit underutilized. I might have to walk farther, but it could be underutilized." So, it's something that we would forward on.
I just, I have a problem with people using that, that go to court, and it's filled most of the time when there's court going on and stuff, and saying, "Yeah, find a spot out in, out in the neighborhoods to park."
Yeah, and I would also-
"That doesn't strike me as surplus property." And so, I, your definitions, I have, I have trouble with on that one, because that doesn't strike me as surplus.
Echo that- Echo that, all of these are potential surplus property, there would definitely be public hearings, neighborhood meetings, and a council vote before any property becomes surplus.
I'll bet you the neighborhoods would be weighing on that.
Anything else, councilmembers? April?
A while back, when we closed the Cleaning Green, I think it was councilman, I think it was you, Terry, who had suggested we look at that spot for affordable housing, and I see that it's on the long range, long, are these, are these things where council can suggest maybe something moves into the short-term?
Sure, so that one would be in the long-term because of the amount of planning and coordination that would go into that.
Relocating parks and other, okay.
Yeah, and that parcel is kind of unique in that it's actually not a single parcel, it's connected to the cemetery, so there would need to be a short plat involved to kind of officially dissect them from each other, so that one's a little bit more involved, which is why it's in the long-term.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just looked through the list, and many of these properties I was familiar with, and I wasn't surprised to see them, but I was also surprised at some that I had no idea that, there's one on Alderwood, for example, that surprised me a lot, and yeah, it does seem to me that some of them can be moved forward pretty quickly, I don't know that one in detail, but I would think it might move forward pretty quickly. Another little particular comment, there's one that's off of Byron Avenue, I think that one is very near or backs on to a public trail system, I didn't see any notes about a public trail system, have I got the property wrong?
There is part of the Sammish Crest Trail system that goes through there, it does not go through this property.
Okay, but that might be the sort of property where we would retain maybe more of the property, or to create buffers to the public trail system, in those, we couldn't just sell that property, we might sell it with encumbrance.
Any further discussion on any of these items?
Leslie, did you want to comment?
Okay. Are Parks Directors coming forward, having to do with that, that comment on Byron Avenue and the trail system up there?
That there is no trail near that property.
Okay, maybe with the wrong property then?
It's at least several, at least a few blocks away, so I don't think we'd have to retain anything there.
April?
And just, the Real Estate Review Committee, it's the first I've ever heard of that, is that just a group of planning staff that comes together?
That's designated through the BMC, and so, as it is now, it's a city attorney, the real, property manager, and, trying to think of who else, Finance Director, and I think as it's written in the BMC, the most affected department, so whether it be Parks or Public Works or Planning.
Okay, thank you, so I believe that was for information only, presumably if any of these do proceed further in the surplus process, it will come back to the City Council. Thank you very much, Kate. The next item is an update on the City Center Implementation Strategy. The City Center Implementation Strategy contains city-led actions and a timeline to realize the community's visions for the city center, as described in the Downtown, Old Town, and Waterfront District Subarea Plans. Staff will provide an update on actions to date and further actions. Darby, Ms. Darby Coles is here to begin the presentation.
Good afternoon, Darby Coles, Planning and Community Development, you know, you have a lot of presentations today, so I'll try to make mine snappy. So, the City Center Implementation Strategy was adopted at the end of 2014, and really the purpose of doing that was making sure that we have a coordinated system of reviewing and initiating projects in all three of our city center districts, so not looking at downtown, or old town, or the waterfront in isolation, but how are we going to pull all these different things off? It's tied to our budgeting process, and it's also really important, because then we can track our progress and make sure that we're communicating our successes and accountable to what we've told people that we're going to do, so. Here is just a snapshot from the implementation strategy, I didn't include the whole thing in your packet, it is available online. I think it is important to know that it is aligned with our budgeting process, so every year through our city center team, which includes multiple department heads, we go through and look and say, "What did we say we were going to do this year, what needs to be included in the budget, what needs to be included as a staff resource?" And it's divided into short, mid, and long-term actions, the short-term actions go through 2019, and those are the ones that I'm going to focus on and give you a brief update on today. So, we'll start with downtown, under the category of redevelopment and activities. A few of the things that have been completed in the last two years, we're establishing a city center recognition program, that's going to launch this year, where the mayor is going to start recognizing two times a year significant projects, and providing some accolades to those proponents. We've also done significant upgrades to the federal building, and as you know, the Public Works and HR Departments are moved there now. There's going to be another round of improvements there in the lobby. And a couple of other things that are underway now, we are starting to work with the Downtown Bellingham Partnership on a retail development strategy, which I'm sure I'll be coming forward and talking to you more about later. We're doing continued improvements to our permitting through the lien process, and looking through our different permitting systems and making them more efficient. There will be an update to the city center design standards that will be beginning this fall, led by the Planning Department. And we also have begun drafting updates to the regulations and resources for commerce in the right-of-way, so things like sidewalk cafes, some of you may have seen the food truck pilot that's underway, looking at how we can facilitate those types of business Under the category of historic resources, we amended the special evaluation program criteria, so that buildings that are on the national and local register can both take advantage of that, that broadens the eligibility of that program significantly. We also broadly promoted and provided training on the International Existing Building Code, which provides flexibility in the codes for updating existing buildings. A downtown historic district was established, that was at the end of 2014, that's an honorary recognition, but it also makes us eligible for state and federal programs. We've published an interactive online and mobile story map, an audio tour of Downtown Bellingham, and offered free tours led by the Good Time Girls. And currently underway, we're working with WashDOT on freeway signage, and working with the Tourism Bureau on further developing cultural heritage tourism through the adoption of a new strategic plan. In other tourism and hospitality-related efforts, the Bellingham Police Department has done quite a few things regarding crime prevention outreach and training to business owners, that's a free service that they offer. They have added additional personnel to the Bike and Foot Patrol, and increased in the police level of service downtown, which I believe they're coming in at the next meeting to go over in more detail with you. They've also been doing police training on mental health and addiction-related issues. The city established and funded the homeless outreach team, the Downtown Partnership, we worked with them, and they established a resource guide on behavioral and safety issues, and have been hosting ongoing meetings with downtown stakeholders about those types of issues. A downtown visitor's center was open, an online artwork collection tour, and city center rotating art shows have been very successfully underway, and you've seen the improvements to the museum campus with the artifacts winery, and the banners, and landscaping, outdoor seating, that's really activated that location as well. Under Parks and Placemaking, we've really focused on utilizing our existing assets better. One of those is the Small Commercial Street Plaza, this was actually a project for the night market that started out being focused on that plaza next to the parking garage, but you can see it, the capacity has turned into a much bigger deal than that. But we have continued to contract with the Bellingham Partnership on other ideas to activate that space, there's going to be a replacement of the brickwork in the plaza, the addition of a green wall, new restroom signage, those are some of our only public restrooms downtown that no one knows about, so doing a better job of advertising that. We've also experimented with rooftop events on the top of the parking garage, the Pickford has hosted a very successful film series in the last few years, and we've also worked with organizations that have been interested in expanding the depot market availability and capacity, and will be continuing to look at opportunities for enhancing that space. Under streets and streets as places, I think most of you were present for Katie Frank's presentation about the State Street Corridor Plan, and you've seen what's happened there already with the angled parking. We're going to be continuing to support some of the Kapow placemaking projects in that corridor, and implementing that corridor vision. Downtown street standards have been established to make sure that when we do things like the boldouts on Laurel and Maple Street, that they match, and that we have some sort of consistency in our sidewalk improvements. You've seen rain gardens come into play, bike racks, corrals, and we've also expanded our wayfinding system, so that when people get spit out into downtown from the South Bay Trail, they know where to get on to other trails and how to kind of get through the district, so those have been really great improvements. I'm going to move into Old Town quickly.
You got a picture today?
Yeah, I know, that was actually just a couple of weeks ago, and I didn't think that we were going to have another dusting, but that's kind of looking like Bellingham now. The C Street Railroad Crossing was reopened in Old Town, also, we, the city has sold the Army Street Site, which is what you see here, to a private developer, and that will be redeveloped over the next year or so. We've also been informally considering proposals for the 600 West Holly Site, next to Maritime Heritage Park. We haven't been actively seeking redevelopment there, because according to the developing, the development community that we've spoken with, it's a little bit premature for where the district is at today. Maritime Heritage Park, there have been quite a few safety and security initiatives implemented there, the Police Department, I think you saw crime prevention analysis, and the Parks Department has improved visibility with vegetation trimming, installation of security cameras, installation of regulatory signs, some changes to the seating and the landscaping walls, and they've also hired seasonal park stewards and increased the programming, this was one successful event last year that was a continuation of the Downtown Sounds Concert Series, and the Parks Department will actually be coming in a little bit later this spring and giving you a more comprehensive update about the park. And finally, the Waterfront District, one of the categories that we have in the strategy is surrounding cleanup, Watcom Waterway and GP West have been cleaned up, I'm sure you've seen all the nice, pretty new gravel out there, looks great, and all of the other cleanup sites like RG Haley, Cornwall, Central, et cetera, those are all underway, and we're continuing to partner with the Port on those. And then, under the category of waterfront infrastructure, streets, and parks, I believe you've also received an update on that recently. The ASB Trail Phase One was completed, Cornwall Beach Master Plan adopted, Marine Nearshore Habitat Assessment completed, the pilings for the Central Avenue Pier have been installed, and a bid's going out to do the infill panel very soon. The Phase One Utility Master Plan has been completed, and Watcom Waterway Park has been designed, which is what you see on the screen. The park and rotor being bid in June, the Vision Plan reevaluation is underway, and we also have a Historic Artifact Plan that just went out, and we'll be reviewing consultants for that work next week, so. Lots of exciting projects, you probably saw in your packet, there's a list of the other things that are to come in 2017, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and then I'm also excited, because we're at the point now where we need to start brainstorming what the next round is going to look like, so as you hear from your constituents, and you have ideas and things that you think need to be focused on, please send them our way, because we want to generate the next generation.
Kate, thank you, Darby. Councilmembers? Pinky?
I have a couple of things I'm wondering if you can send me, and I do have a question, one of them is, I'd like to see an overview of the recognition plan program.
Sure.
And then, also, the marketing plan for, between Downtown Bellingham Partnership and tourism, what that marketing plan looks like? But my question is, the timeline around the, our parking lot, and the restrooms, and getting the blade signs and stuff, what is our timeline of getting that done?
What did you say about the parking lot?
The, our parking garage, sorry.
Oh, the parking garage?
Parking garage, the, the blade signs for the restroom, and the wall, and all of that, when are we, what's our timeline in getting some of that done?
That's a good question, I know it's all well underway, Ted, do you happen to have an update? I'll have to check in with Clark on that, and I'd be happy to send you an update on that, but I know they're getting towards the tail end of that project, you've seen the new windows go in, so that there's now visibility into and out of the stairwells, the new sign went up, and so the focus now is on kind of those final pieces of the plaza, the plaza work, and I know that they're looking at that for the spring, I believe, but I can get you a more specific timeline.
Councilmembers? April?
So, two questions, one, it says a 24-hour sanitary public restroom, and it has a little check mark in 2016, I know that Parks was talking about something like the Portland Lou, but all I've seen, most of the time, is just the porta-potties that are open, so now that we're going to be putting up wayfinding, I'm wondering where we're at with ensuring that we actually have a restroom that is inviting?
Yeah, so there's a couple of different things, I think initially, when that project was put on the list, we were thinking about building some sort of standalone Portland Lou, but in the meantime, upon vetting that idea and the expense of it, we've kind of approached two different things, and one is the retrofit of the existing restroom at Maritime Heritage Park, that's underway, and...
Well, actually, what we're doing is kind of our own version of a Portland Lou, but instead of having it be standalone, it's going to be attached to the building, but it's going to be similar to a Portland Lou, it's a, it's a single entry with the 24-hour light, and we are proceeding, we're in final design and permitting of that, so that will go in this year.
And that's at Maritime, and then also, just increasing the visibility and the accessibility of the parking garage restrooms, and working on that, and then, it might be something that we do need to further the conversation, but we wanted to start there before we started having the conversation of where are we going to put public restrooms downtown, because I'm sure everyone's just going to want them right outside of their business, and it'll be a complicated conversation, but there's some really great examples in other communities of some creative solutions there, so.
And my second question was, I got a little bit of feedback from a couple of downtown businesses who maybe have the, they had the impression that it was pretty onerous to try to be flexible with an outside space, so you had mentioned that we're going to be looking at maybe our codes, and if somebody is a downtown business owner, and they want to try something flexible, different, some outdoor seating, what are the options right now?
We're pretty flexible as far as the use of the space, with one respect, and that is in regard to meeting the ADA requirements, so there have, has been a really big push in the last year or so to make sure, and go through and check to make sure that we're in compliance with our ADA clearance standards. There's a lot going on in a small space, and making sure that people with disabilities can navigate our downtown is really important, but other than that, we do have allowances in place for things like sidewalk cafes, we have a Parklet Program that's ready to go, we only have one right now, but we welcome other interested Parklet applicants, or if people just have another idea of something that they want to do, we're always happy to work with them, whether it's more landscaping or business displays, and we have really good guidelines in place for how we can help them with that, so send them our way.
I will, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Darby, that was an update, I just want to add my own plug and support for public restrooms. If you look back at the history of cities in the previous century, it was a revolution when cities started providing public restrooms, and many of those restrooms have been removed over the years, and I think we're discovering that was a bit of a mistake, good, clean public restrooms are not just good for preventing problems in, say, Maritime Heritage Park, but all over the city, signage is one thing, but I still can't help but wonder if, if we want our downtown to grow, we don't need to provide more of those public spaces, you don't want to have to go into a restaurant with your child and say, "I know I'm not buying anything, but my child needs to go," I think there's a public need there if we want a great downtown. Any more on that? Thank you, Darby, we'll go on to the next item, which is a review of the Planning Community Development Department's Long Range Planning Division, the work program with that division, I see Mr. Greg Ockert is here today.
I am, thank you, good afternoon, everyone, I know you're running a little behind, so I'll be quick, two weeks ago, Rick Sepler, the Planning Director, came before you and talked about our work program and the major projects that we're going to be working on over the next two years, and then I'm going to talk today about some of the other things that we're doing besides those major projects, and they're listed on page 188 of your packet. Rick went over the first four, the Annexation Phasing Plan, the ADU ordinance update, the subdivision ordinance update, and the commercial zoning review, he went over those with you two weeks ago. So, beginning with the Waterfront Plan Amendment, I think Darby even mentioned, we're taking a look at the Vision Plan, that's undoubtedly a 2018 project, if any changes are proposed to the, to the Waterfront Master Plan and the associated agreements. The Sign Code, we'll be looking at that, I think that's also a 2018 project, specifically off-premise signs, at least that's where the project will begin. At least, that's where the project will begin. The Community College's Institutional Master Plan, we've been working with those folks for a couple of years now to get their plan ready for public review, and it's scheduled for Planning Commission beginning review in May of this year. Downtown Design Guidelines, Darby mentioned, we're working on those, and that's a project that will begin this fall and probably carry over into 2018. We've got three comp plan amendments that were doctored by council that'll come to you probably this summer. Planning Commission will begin review of those three in April. I think you all know our comprehensive plan, our recently adopted comprehensive plan was appealed, and so the Growth Management Hearings Board is going to hold a hearing, and that's scheduled for May 31 in this room, if you'd like to come watch the Growth Management Hearings Board in action. We won't get a decision until scheduled for July, so they don't give you a decision the same day they hold the hearing, and we probably won't get a decision until July. But that, that project has taken a fair amount of our time here in the first couple of months of the year. We're working on two projects with the county. One is to update the Urban Fringe Subarea Plan, which is a plan that covers those areas that are just outside of the city limits. That's an older document that now that the city and county have updated, have adopted new comprehensive plans, we need to update that subarea plan. And we're also, we've also committed to work with them and with the county and all the small cities on the TDR program to see if we can't jumpstart that, both to the benefit of the county and to, and the city. Comprehensive Plan Implementation Strategy, that's, that's where our work program comes from. It comes from the comp plan, and we'll be prioritizing the things in there that we said we were going to do. I think Rick talked to you about the running list of code amendments that Planning Commission will begin review of in March, so those will be coming to you in, probably in May of this year, and those are fairly minor cleanup-type activities. Vacation rentals, that's a 2000, late '17, throughout '18 project. We'll be developing rules and letting some of the larger cities go first so that we can steal the best of their work. Historic bulk and scale, we need to look at our design guidelines to make sure that new construction in historic areas is compatible with the existing character and the surplus lands you just learned about. So, other than that, we're not doing anything this year.
Nothing is that.
Not today. Questions?
Council members, any questions? April?
So, the TDR, PDR, I maybe, I don't know a lot about the Development Right Program, so I don't know if it would be appropriate to bring something to kind of educate us better, or if you all are really educated on it, then I can go learn it myself from you.
I'd be happy to meet with you.
Is that, do you?
Yes.
Okay, we could use some education on that, I think, as that comes forward.
Okay.
I also, the Strong Town Spatial Analysis, does that also include, we had asked for some mapping to understand if maybe, there was a suggestion from Strong Towns that clustered areas, areas with higher development, actually could be subsidizing lower development areas just with their tax dollars and the infrastructure that it takes?
Right.
Is that what you're talking about there? Bringing us back some stuff?
Yeah, I skipped right over that. Yeah, we'll be looking at, using that methodology, the first time you'll see it is with the Annexation Phasing Plan, where we'll look at the costs associated with serving those areas that are sort of further out from the city center. Using that methodology, that'll be part of that project.
April, thank you for bringing up the Strong Town Spatial Analysis. I think that's tied tightly to another thing that we've talked about, which is our parks' level of service tools, GIS map-based tools. Both of these are map-based approaches to understanding how much it costs to deliver service and how much service we need to deliver and where we need to deliver it. And a lot of these things kind of have to do, they stay kind of focused on land use and infrastructure, but that particular piece has a strong financial component, and that very much falls on the shoulders of the city council and some big decisions that we in the administration need to be making, and we'll need to pick up our level of service discussion again this year. We've had some significant developments, but those big, long-term financial pieces need to be picked up, and that Strong Towns-type analysis is going to be key, I think, to making some of those decisions. Any further discussion on this update? This is for information only. April, go ahead.
I have one more. I'm not sure where it falls in here, but as far as implementing the changes we did in the comprehensive plan, there was a particular article that we put in there regarding looking at greenfield spaces and potential ways to either incentivize or encourage developers to do more mixed social economic status housing so that we don't get what we have currently, where we get large sex of somebody who maybe has a lot more resources, and then we pocket poverty in certain areas. Is that something that could fit in here somewhere? I already know that you all are pretty high at capacity right now, so I don't want to add too much on, but there's a lot of development happening in greenfield areas and potential for more, so I'd like to know we were at least paying attention to that?
Yeah, we are. As we look at the comp plan and the various things that we said we were going to do, that will be high on the list for sure.
Anything else? Thank you very much. We'll go on to the next item for the council, which is approval of the meeting minutes from February 13th. Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections to the meeting minutes for 13th? All of those in favor approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those passed unanimously. Old and New Business. Pinky?
So, I was in Olympia two weeks ago. We already talked about testifying for the AIS program, but also just wanted to give you an update. I did attend the AWC conference and got a lot of updates from our legislation around how tight budgets are going to be this year, and I'm sure that's not a big surprise to everybody, but one of the big things is, of course, we're trying to put, keep pressure on to increase the funds towards the liquor and marijuana taxes, that we start getting the amount of income that should be allocated to us and that it does end up coming our way. But just so you know, it wasn't looking very shiny and bright in regards to budgets going this year, and just wanted to put that out there for everybody.
Okay, thank you. Terry, you had your hand up?
Yeah. I just wanted to mention an event that's happening this Friday that Sculpture Northwest is, is putting on, and I think it has, the reason I'm bringing it up is I think it does have some significance to times that are going on. It's a sculpture event called Arts Beyond Conflict: Crossing Borders, and it's a sculpture event featuring artists from Iran, Iraq, Libya, as well as Saudi Arabia, and Israel immigrants from those areas. And it's, they're doing it as a response to the seemingly pervasive prejudices against people from the Middle East and North African regions exacerbated by the recent travel ban, and it's to promote an appreciation of cultural diversity and, through an international public sculpture exhibit. It's been endorsed by our Bellingham Arts, Arts Commission. I had gotten an email, but it came pretty late that I sent around to you that had a request that the Bellingham City Council endorse it, but I recognize it's late, so I'm not necessarily asking for that, but I wanted you to be aware that that was going on because it's, it is a pretty significant sculpture event. It's an international event. It's not just, and we'll be drawing people from a wide range of, a broad area, so.
Thank you, Terry. So, that's next Friday at 6:00 PM downtown at the Northwest Sculpture Gallery on Prospect Place. April?
To piggyback on that, Marie could possibly put that on Bellingham Council's Facebook page. That would be great. We can share that out. I heard in Rick's talk about what we're looking at for the planning department, he said, I think he used terms, we're about 100% at capacity, and in having some conversations, I was interested in when we're going to look at our fee schedule for permitting. I know we haven't looked over that for a couple of years, and really matching the fact that we're, we're charging to be able to compensate for our staff and all the work that they're doing. And I did have a discussion with Rick about that. It would, he thought that there might be some room in the schedule to bring that back, Greg. I wanted it to include, we recently had a letter of somebody who was frustrated about the $1,500 cost that it is for going to the hearing examiner. There's different ways that communities and talking with the other Brian deal with that. Sometimes they look at hardships, so different, if somebody can show a hardship, it could be a difference in fee, or other communities actually will refund the amount if they're found to actually have been on the right side. So, I don't know, Greg, I thought Rick was going to be here, so I don't know if I need to make a motion in order for us to make sure that we're taking a look at the fee schedule for the permits?
I'll just mention it to Rick. I don't think we can make a motion.
And that, when that does come back, certainly, Brian and I think Rick have chatted, but the other Brian, in regards to the hearing examiner fee and hardship.
A hardship case, okay.
Okay, I have two items. One, just a public announcement as well as to the council members. The council will be having their annual retreat. It's scheduled at March 25. We've confirmed that we'll probably be at Woodstock Farm again. That meeting is open to the public, but it's not a public meeting. You can come and observe the council. We're thinking it may just be a half-day retreat this year. Based on the material we have, it may extend a little bit through the lunch hour. Details forthcoming. And then, finally, I'd like to ask the council if there's any questions or objection. This has to do with a discussion that I had with Mr. Heinrich Schirr with regard to the council president's duties as supervisor for our staff members. There is no job description for what the supervisor's job is, and just as kind of an HR thing, we have two staff members who are supervised. There needs to be, I think, a parallel job description just for that small HR-related piece, and Brian said he would be, could work on that. If there's any objection, we'll do that. That doesn't have to do with the other council president's duties, which are legislative and parliamentary. That wouldn't be included in this job description. So, any comments or questions about that? Okay, we'll go ahead with that. Anything else under Old and New? Great. We will now then move into executive session. There's, has been a sixth item added to potential litigation, five minutes to discuss potential litigation and property acquisitions, total of 45 minutes. So, if we do it right, I should be coming back here around 4:05 to, to reconvene the meeting. We're now in recess to executive session. Oh, I should read them? Okay, so we have six items now, potential litigation, a claim number 201708, 10 minutes, potential property acquisition, about five minutes, another potential property acquisition, five minutes, and a third potential property acquisition, five minutes, potential litigation matter, about 15 minutes, and a sixth item that's added, which is both property acquisition and litigation, potential litigation related, total of 45 minutes. Again, I will be, we're going into recess to the executive session, and I will come back and reconvene at approximately 4:05.